I will call the meeting to order. Please invite you guys with pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in its soul, with liberty and justice for all.
My life is a term of service and this is my wish.
Hi, good evening. So I just want to welcome everyone to Center Road School. Welcome everyone who came. I see some familiar faces here, so that's nice. And so I hope this meeting goes well and that we can host.
Thank you. Thank you for hosting us tonight and all of you for coming out. Just in case anyone needs to know their meds and the latest rooms are just near the office, you just have to ask them as you think they're due to be used. So we will start with item 2.0, consent agenda. Mrs. Bush?
Item 2, approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Anyone would like to pull any items?
I'd like to discuss Board Policy 2001.
Which is item number S? Anyone else want to pull any other items? Mrs. Arnn?
Can I pull one down, please?
Anyone else? I would also like to pull M and U. So, anything else? And it will go on. Let's see, items A, B, C. So it should be A, B, F, G, H, I, J, K, N, O, P, Q, R, T, V, W. Okay? All those in favor of those items on the consent agenda? So, thank you. Alright, we'll start with you, Mr. Stan.
Okay. I was curious about, I understand that we're going through the policy book and revising them as we come to them, but I was curious specifically about this policy simply because it seems like the additions that we're making here are less policy statements and more statements of support. So I was trying to understand the sense of the policy maybe in adding the particular paragraphs when I felt like the actual initial policy covered 3.1.
Well, as we're going through the policies, we are comparing our policies with CAES' policies, and these last two paragraphs were in the CAES' policies and we liked the wording of it and thought that it would just add to how we have our administrative structure set up. That's because we use the policy, the policy committee had to speak to that.
If I'm not a full member of the policy committee, but our board policy was 2001, which is the previous page, and CAES' 2001 policy included those two paragraphs, they don't have a 2001, it included those two paragraphs plus the two mid-paragraphs, and that was their discussion because oftentimes CAES had much more research into this and that that language seemed formidable to the board members on the committee.
Any other questions?
Just, again, my comment would be that I felt like the first two paragraphs adequately covered the policy and I'm not sure that the other two really had anything to do with it.
Any other comments on that? So, do we have a motion over the other one's policy? Mr. Holt?
Make a motion that we pass the policy.
Pass the policy as written, 2001.
Is there a second? Mrs. Bush? Second? Any further comment or discussion? All those in favor? Or opposed? And Mrs. Arnn?
Item 1340. I'd just like some clarification for what came in first paragraph. Such use or distribution will reflect favorably upon the school system and community. Says that information will be provided and will be used or distributed. When is it going to be used in that year? How can we control it? The favorability is what bothers me because we don't, everybody is not going to agree with what we do. So to restrict distribution of information based on, it must be presented. It must appear to the school system, it must make the school system appear in a favorable position. I'm not sure how we can monitor that regularly enough. And I can't imagine denying anyone access to information that we're required to provide to them. Do you have to solicit a promise that I can take?
I don't think we have the final decision. I don't think you're right. I don't think we can guarantee that it would be used favorably, but certainly we can ask. It's just, it's publications and records that are public documents.
Some of our records may support something that was not favorable to the system. I have a difficult time understanding will reflect favorably upon the school system. I don't feel like we can monitor how someone uses information that we're providing.
Mr. Stan?
I actually had an additional question on this because at least in the electronic copy I received, it's very hard to tell what the actual new policy is and what the stricken language is. Is it only the first page that's the new policy? Because electronically, everything else is straightened.
That's correct. Because the last four, five, six pages, well, I guess it's more than that, were all procedural or, yeah, procedures and not policy. And they're also in the student section because they're on student, the confidentiality of student records, all of the rest is access to people records and those kinds of things as opposed to the original.
And then all this?
We have an 11-page policy in the other section.
Okay, so you've marked it red because it previously existed in this policy in your 11?
I think it just came out red, but it's, the deletion, this is word for word in another section of our policy, our book.
Okay.
The student section.
Is the proposed language CAES' language?
Yes, it is. Word for word. Any further discussion? Does anyone want to make a motion, one or the other? Mr. Kemp?
I move to approve of this petition for a warning.
Is there a second? Mr. Holt?
I'll second my motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The two that I pulled, Policy 1411, is just one sentence on page four or five where it talks about lockers and desks being searched, that just seems to be deleted because that is already in our search procedure policy in the student section. So, it's on page four or five, and it's the only one in black on that page. And I can probably do another policy at this point unless anybody has any questions. On Policy 2112, there's just one paragraph that's in there twice. The second red paragraph on page one is farther down in the policy, so that just, the first one just seems to be deleted.
And make a motion that we approve Policy 411, uh, 1411, and Policy 2112 as amended.
Is there a second?
Second?
Any discussion or questions? Mrs. Arnn?
I have a question about Policy 2112. Are new administrators provided mentors in their employment capacity for how long they are?
Thank you, great question, Mrs. Arnn. Our administrators are provided mentors for two years and they have a primary and a secondary mentor.
Any other questions?
Could that information, like, could I consult you with the mentor or the certain person?
Because certainly, I was going to refer to provide that, that's the same thing. That the board?
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on those two policies? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Now we'll move on to 3.0, Secretary's Report. Opportunity for the Department of Education to add or delete the agenda items, and I don't want to do that at this time. Item 2.2, Rapide School's Student Representatives Report. I will be on there.
Good evening. So, it's been a busy time of year, obviously, you know, we're coming to the middle of the year and we're more than halfway done with the school year. I just wanted to let you know that as I kind of have feared for a little while now, Common Core standards are starting to creep into some of my classes, and while I don't agree with the benefits of most of them, the class that it has kind of crept into, it's actually been detracting from my experience, it's a psychology class. And based on what we were doing before and what it's trying to do now to instill these Common Core standards, it's no longer discussion-based and while we still do activities, there's a lot more worksheets and it's really not beneficial for some students because now instead of, you know, talking about it and getting to understand concepts, there's a lot of worksheets and multiple choice and textbook work, so it's not exactly what it used to be, which was more productive for the class as a whole. Midterms are all done. I know a lot of seniors enjoyed being able to sleep on days that they didn't have to take an exam. We've been waiting for that a long time. And also, I think midterms are a important thing because not only do they reflect the students' work, but it also can be a reflection of the teacher. I know, and at least one of my classes this year, kids with grades in the 90s ended up getting failing grades on the midterm, and kids with 70s got, you know, passing grades, which isn't a reflection of standard classes because everyone does study in, you know, this class. So I think it's an interesting look at the teacher and how their teaching style is putting across in their exams. On a positive note, Book Club, as I mentioned before, we're having a lot of authors come in. We've seen him write a book, All of Our Yesterdays, and Mrs. Norman has actually set up a Skype with the author, so that's really exciting. And we have a couple other authors coming in, and I'll bring names and team names next meeting. The Murder Mysteries is Friday and Saturday. Tickets are $5 ahead of time, $7 at the door. It's all student-written and it's a great, just night for everyone. It's a really great show and I encourage you all to attend if you can. On Saturday, the Allstate auditions finally come, so students who got into Eastern Regionals will be auditioning to go to Allstate, which is everyone in the state competing for, to become that one Allstate band. And last year, we had two members make it, and hopefully we'll keep that up because it's definitely a hard process. The Jazz Band is going to a festival at the Rico Fermi High School, February 22nd, and last year, we competed and we got a gold medal. We were the only band to receive a gold medal, so we're working hard this year to keep up with the good work, and it's been a really productive year so far. Also, on another note, I'm sure you know, but it has reached the students that we are in fact out of Staples at the high school, and, which is kind of funny, I guess, because it's Staples. So I just wanted to let you know that that kind of has been affecting students because we're going to go to Staples when it's A and just kind of handed in the paper quickly. So, just letting you know.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Olivia? Oh, Mrs. Arnn?
About from Mr. Picard. Based on Olivia's comment. Are you out of Staples?
Through the chair. This is the first I've heard that we're out of Staples, so maybe that's related to a certain area, but if there's an issue, the school principal can bring it to my attention and we'll be glad to take care of it.
So, our athletics have been going very well recently. Hockey qualified for states recently. Two girls from track also qualified for states. Boys basketball is a few wins away, and I think they'll be able to get it, they're looking good this year. Wrestling, we brought home a couple medals and we're looking strong this year. So with all our major tournaments coming up for all sports, things are looking good. We should be bringing home the title coming up, which should be good for them.
Anybody have any questions for Erin? Thank you both very much. Okay, we move on to Item 4.0, Community Forum. Opportunity for comments on agenda items, potential future agenda items, or general information provided to the Board with citizens and community organizations. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this evening?
And Mrs. Fisher, I might add, though, Item 8.0 is a budget workshop, which was not originally planned, but was on this agenda, so if there were budget comments, this would also be the same thing.
Tony D'Innari, 138 Grove Street. These are budget questions. I'm wondering if the board or the public can be provided to some examples of things that may not have been provided to students or teachers this year due to the budget freeze. I'd be intrigued to hear some examples of things that have been a no-no because of funding issues. In reviewing the budget documents this weekend, I know that we budget for teachers to be replaced at a lower level than what the outgoing teacher is making, but we seem to be underbudgeting that account. It appears in the last year or two that most teachers that we hire, we are hiring at far over the $69,000 on average that is budgeted. So I'm wondering why we are lowballing that number when we're, statistically it shows that we're not really hiring teachers at that rate. So if we're hiring them at $75,000 or $80,000, why are we not budgeting that in? Because that's obviously what we're looking for. I get you want quality teachers, I'm all for that, but let's be realistic in our budgeting because that's where we're getting in trouble, it seems like, too, is not being able to spend money because we're not budgeting accurately. And finally, the last budget workshop on Monday, it's all awesome that you guys get pink copies of what you're talking about, but when you don't speak about them in detail, those of us in the audience sort of sit there and scratch their heads. And I'm not able to find the extra papers on the website, so I don't know if I'm just missing it, and I may miss it on the day that it's actually uploaded and I just can't find it. But if you could be in more detail when you're discussing your questions, because you're getting, the superintendent's getting questions long before the public has any knowledge that you're asking the questions, and so it's a little difficult to follow in the audience and even thereafter when we don't have the same information that you all have. Thank you.
Does anyone else who would like to address the board this evening?
Lori Majoric, 60 Patricia Drive. I don't usually like to speak on topics I don't feel well informed about or have a vested interest in, but at the last week's budget workshop, I feel the need to speak and support Mrs. Buell and the Vernon Elementary School. I actually have no connection to this school, but I see a picture that I think many may be different than some of yours. Last week, some of you expressed concern over the number of students the program is serving. You were looking at the cost of running Vernon Elementary versus the cost of running the other elementary schools, apples to oranges. Thank you to Mr. Holt, who reminded everyone that Vernon Elementary was created as a means of cutting costs to this district by bringing out or outplacing special ed students back to town, and yes, hopefully earning us some tuition-paying students as well. I was at the meeting with most of you the night the idea was presented last year, but you are not comparing the cost of running Vernon Elementary to the cost of outplacing these same students, which is apples to apples. If you, the board, cannot remember this, what chance do we have with taxpayers? Some of you also expressed concern that Mrs. Sherman's time and the cost of her salary is solely dedicated to the administration of Vernon Elementary. What small amount of time I volunteer at Center Road has given me some exposure to our integrated special ed students. While I know nothing of these children and their individual cases, I could tell you with absolute certainty that self-control is an issue with many and outbursts do occur at any time. What leads to an outburst could be as simple as being displeased with a drawing or a classwork, the absence of a favorite parent professional, having you be in class when gym or recess is preferred, another child is reaching, anything. Some children cry, some scream or curse, others kick or hit or pinch or bite or flail, throw themselves against the wall, while others throw furniture. I'm sure there are many other behaviors we cannot even imagine. I have no doubt that Mrs. Sherman's presence would be required in these situations as Mrs. Posits' presence is sometimes required here at CRX. I couldn't be off-base, but this is what I was picturing last week when Mrs. Buell told you she does not want to risk the liability of Mrs. Sherman's duties being divided. You also wanted to know why Mrs. Buell and Mrs. Sherman were not more aggressively recruiting in other districts. The program is now, what, five months old? Special ed students don't always adapt to all the new situations. Many tend to be creatures of habit. Why would a parent, much less a parent for a special needs child who is looking for a specific fit for their child, uproot that child for your program that is only five months old? Other than possibly the location, small class size, and Mrs. Buell's reputation, what else right now do you have to offer? What successes do you have to show? And some of you are already questioning the cost effectiveness of the program. So is this a long-term program or not? Special education parents want an established, supportive, successful, secure program to place their children for the duration of their education. Support Mrs. Buell in building that. Support Mrs. Sherman in running that. Then they have something to sell. Then your enrollment situations will come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening?
Wood and Chef, 119 Charles Street Drive. It actually walled, it wasn't 70 degrees. First, I'd just like to say, although I had to say, for those of you who know me, know that I work for the State of Connecticut Department of Developmental Services and oversee care for about 6,500 adults with disabilities and about 2,000 children with disabilities in the north region for the state of Connecticut, and I think that what we're doing is fantastic and if you build it, they will come, but you have to build it right. So give it some time. And that isn't the reason I got up to talk today. I've been talking about, as many places as I can, about the budget and what we need to do and how to be supportive, where we need to ask questions, and instead of people engaging with me about that, they engage with me about Common Core. What I hear from our citizens here in Vernon is what they've read in a blog, middle, right or left, not necessarily what they've read directly from the Common Core site, and not what they've heard from the school committee or educators in town. So I'm asking for some sort of public forums, public demonstration, lectures, information, how it is we're enrolled, how it is it's tied to money, how it is we're developing curriculum or buying curriculum, or all those things are the types of questions. And I'm pretty involved. I have a daughter on the governance council of the high school, I'm on the governance council at the middle school, and Mr. Harrison is doing his best to give us that type of information, and we're talking there about some sort of forum this spring where we can talk about some of that. And I know part of it is you're in the midst of it, so explaining what it is while you're building what it is may be hard, but I think parents are really uneasy about that and not focused on this budget stuff, but all they hear about are the media's Common Core. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening?
Hello. Julie Garz, 114 Olson Drive. It's been quite a while since I've been here, unfortunately, due to different circumstances, I haven't been able to make it, but I did want to come and kind of share, it's nothing budget-related, and I know that's the big talk now, and obviously that's most of the points right now, but I did want to share something positive. I, especially this time when people are looking at magnet schools, as most of you know, I shared last year that I was pretty concerned about my son going to BCMS. So at this time, we were applying and looking frantically for a magnet school that would meet his needs. We found one and applied and got waitlisted. So we did start at BCMS. We were really, really nervous about the transition. His experience at one of these schools was phenomenal. It was, he was well taken care of and loved there, and we were really scared to go to really any middle school, not just BCMS. But I have to say that from day one, our experience there has been so positive. Mr. Harrison has been more than available to me, Mr. Gelato, the new, one of the new vice principals, helped me and worked me through some tears in a couple of days. And the team that Justin is on has Mrs. Roy, Mrs. Fabian, Mrs. Goodman, and Mrs. Poit, and I do need to name them all because they have gone above and beyond what I could have ever expected. Justin had a pretty rough turn. That's just the kid he is. He's an anxious kid and worries about things, but he feels so supported there, probably as much as he did in Northeast, and that's really, really saying a lot. So I really want to commend BCMS for what they're doing over there, his wonderful team of teachers. I mean, I've had Mrs. Roy call me at home to talk to me about how Justin's doing, their concerns she has with his first market period, giving high honors, and he definitely is being challenged there, I know that was one of the concerns. He's a very bright kid and he's definitely there pushing him. So, I know that, I was glad to see Mr. Harrison at the last PTO meeting, I know he's going around to the different elementary schools, and we had talked about doing this earlier and while people are looking at different resources, and so I was glad to see that happening. I know that they're going to have an event Wednesday as well, and it's a great way to sell the school, it does have a lot to offer, and I just, I won't go on anymore other than to say I think they're doing a great job and we're really, really pleased.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? Okay, thank you. I will close Citizens Forum. We will move on to Item 5.0, Agenda Business 5.1, School Improvement Plan for Middle Street Square.
You all have a copy, you saw the other six schools, seven schools rather, in December, and Mrs. Gandop's School Improvement Team, our building level team, did finish their plan based on the available data that they had, and they're just a little behind what they, in their timeline. They also, on 5.2, presented a summary of the school governance team. Those, both of those reports were given for the other six schools, including Vernon Elementary School, last month in December. Mrs. Gandop is here, so she'd be happy to answer questions. We didn't present the others, so allow you to read and ask questions if you had any.
Presenting any questions, Mrs. Arnn?
I'm intrigued by the Character Education Committee. Can you explain to me what the charge of that committee is?
I'm sorry, I couldn't. I apologize.
Character Education Committee?
Yes, we instituted our Positive Behavior Support Program within this school so that all students know exactly what the expectations are, and we have built in a system of rewards and very clear expectations for, if we expect respect in the school, what does that look like in the lunchroom, in the lavatory, in the hallway, et cetera? So we've been, we would like to develop lessons around those character pieces, if you will, for classroom teachers. you will, for classroom teachers to teach and students to model. We have a student council team and a student leadership team that has now come together, and we will start monthly meetings actually this week. And we're hoping to have them model some of these character traits, as well as the adults, the school psychologist, and the school social worker, with all classes.
Do you guys have any questions?
We might as well stay there and move on to 5.2, School Governance. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Gandoff and the Bereston School Governance Council at Lake Street?
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Mrs. Gandoff, at the risk of sounding negative and I don't mean to, it sounds like you're struggling getting a governance council off the ground at Lake Street. Do you have a...
We do. So we sent out a letter to all parents and staff and some community members, and we have some responses. And we've asked again, sent out again, because we want to be sure that we have a good cross-section representation from all of those members to represent our council. Made up of a minimum of seven parents, five teachers, and at least two community members so we can come together and look at the things the council will be looking at. It might be things like taking a look at how welcoming our school is. There was a welcoming walkthrough done in the recent past, and I, one of the things that I would like to charge that committee with, and I'm hoping that they would like to take a look at, will be how can we work to make our school be more welcoming? So in order to move forward with anything the committee decides to do, that being an example, we would like to be sure there's a good representation of people there.
My point was you don't have a committee yet, but you have one teacher and a couple of parents.
Well...
How can you move forward?
Because I have asked, I have sent the letter out again to parents and to ask for more people to step forward with their busy schedules.
Do you know when, did you give them a deadline to get back to?
Next Friday, February, whatever the deadline is.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mrs. Gandoff? Thank you very much. Good luck getting people to join your committee. Item 5.3, First Reading of the Policy Policy 2001. No action required. Is there any one who would like to discuss this or ask questions about it?
Did this come from Kate?
Yes, it did.
Just asking this as a procedural question. We seem to get many other policies that we just received and then voted on. I think this one's so different that we're getting a first reading.
This one's new. We do not have this policy.
This one's a new versus modified.
Right. When we have a new policy, we need to review it, and then we'll go to the next one.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. We move on to item 5.4, Facility Committee Meeting. Recording. Mr. Keppe.
The committee met earlier this evening and with Mr. Kleynan as superintendent and discussed the capital expenditure plan in some detail. The work that is contemplated on Ruffert, for instance, and implementation of the changeover from using heating oil to heat gas is a major endeavor that will occur. And as a result, we felt that the plan is moving forward. It goes over a six-year timeframe in a planned and methodical way to do what can be done to address the capital needs of the various buildings that we have in a logical way. So that's all I can tell you at this point, unless you'd like detail on what several items cost. But I guess at this point, the committee was satisfied with the presentation and feels that we're on a good plan to address the capital needs of the school system.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the capital improvement plan. Is that a...
Like second act.
Any discussion, questions, or comments?
I'm not second guessing, I'm just looking for some clarification. At Lake Street School, there's a negative air issue, and that's been paying to, for 2015-16. Can you tell her a little bit about the way we deal with it? She doesn't want to put it out until...
She goes, "Like Skinner." That's about it.
I'm sorry.
Skinner.
I'm sorry.
Center Road, sure.
Skinner.
Skinner.
Negative air. How should we...
Well, we have subject matter that's worth sending to the room, so I'll ask Mr. Kleynan to try and make some progress. But...
Okay, we'll let you... Can you answer? It was about the negative air issues at Lake Street?
No, it was just Skinner.
Sorry.
I was on this one. You were asking what they, what are they and where are they?
Leading the resolution to 1516. I just wanted to understand.
The building itself has a negative, it's in a negative air situation, meaning that air infiltrates the building through cracks and windows instead of going through an air handling system. The issue, the problem with that is it doesn't go through air filters. So there's, there could possibly be some air quality issues. And then it also had an issue of water evaporating out of floor drains and other things, which when the water evaporates, you get a bad sound. So you have to constantly maintain the floor drainage system. It creates a negative pressure issue in the building. So there's outside air that has to be brought in and treated to make up for the air. So at present, the situation is not known, it's existed for a while, and at present, you know, it's doubled by opening one of everybody's plug. Because that's opposite negative air.
So it's an air quality issue, it's been going on for a while.
Well, it's an air supply issue. It's not, it can create an air quality issue if you don't know it, and you don't deal with it. But like what Mr. Klose said, you know, if you make sure that your traps are filled with water on the basis, you won't get any raw gas. It's a situation that needs to be corrected. That's why it's unplanned. However, it's something that could be managed in the interim.
Any other questions on this?
Mr. Kleynan, just to clarify, that problem you said it's been around for a long time, and it has been. And as I recall, when I was on the School Building Advisory Commission, we tried to address that through the school building project. It's not an easy problem to solve, correct? And that's, it's been under study for several years because of this?
Pardon my sense of that, I think. What we're doing, we're doing some other things, we can maybe incorporate some things into it. But it's something that was, it's been under the air for a while.
And several attempts have been made to correct it without success. And that's what I just wanted, it hasn't been gone unaddressed. They've had many attempts to address it. I think what I hear is you're going to try and do it again, along with some other projects that may go together to make it work. Perfect. Thank you for clarification. And the other question that I had is, do we have out of this capital plan a number as far as what we're going to send to town hall for capital improvement this year?
The board approves the plan, so does the plan. Whether or not it is funded is another question altogether. So we have put estimates in, in the column on the right, as to what each project costs, but this is a six-year plan. Oftentimes, plans don't get funded, and not all the items get funded. And so next year, you revise the plan, and there are other priorities. There is not enough today in our capital map current to cover everything that is in the 1415, so the board will have to make some decisions as the year goes on.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Aron.
A question about the hallway panels at Lake Street School. It was a light issue. Who's that?
No, it's not a light issue. There's problems with the panels and the frame of the panels that needs to be addressed because families have light coming out of them.
Okay.
But it's not a light issue.
Okay.
It's a panel issue.
When I start testing positive for what?
Right, I got light.
Okay.
But doesn't mean that there's an issue.
Okay. And the central office, the window treatments? Can you just explain to me, security, and why that's a security issue?
The window treatments under central office are district, it's a district-wide repair. It's not for a central office, it's for the district. And it's to repair window treatments that are not working properly. So in the case of a security drill, when you have to close your blinds, that money is to get those to work properly.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the six-year capital improvement plan. All those are favored. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item 5.5 is to report some form of education liaisons regarding attendance at organizations or communities. Anybody have anything to report? Mr. Stanton.
I attended on January 23rd the consulting committee for the lab program. First time I've gotten a very interesting. Just some dates to be aware of. February 25th, if you're in those who are younger, they're doing the Red Robin fundraiser. That's about tonight in Manchester. They do have a state compliance review, which is, they call it a mini D E S. That's occurring on April 2nd. I'm going to be the board rep for that, and then I have to talk to consulting committee members as well, as well as everyone else. So that should be an interesting experience. And just as a FYI, this year, we are hosting the State of the Faith Convention at Rockville on May 17th. So that would be a very big event. And I'll actually be across most of the high school, not just at the Boad Building. And they are still looking for volunteers for judges, especially for tractor events. I understand Dr. Conway is a veteran, but he had a tractor event. So if anyone's interested in that, they absolutely need more people.
And that's on the 17th of May?
The district, yes, I believe it is.
Any reports? Mrs. Bush?
Yes, I attended the Northeast School PTO on January 14th. One of the highlights of the evening was Mr. Harrison coming to the school to talk to the parents about the programs at the middle school. He had a wonderful presentation to the parents that were there. He showed them how the schedule worked and basically was able to answer any questions that the parents had. And I felt it was extremely informative, and he invited them all personally to come to the Night of Exploration at the middle school. And then they had their business meeting, which was, the business, the one in December had to be canceled because of a snowstorm. So there was a lot of business that was going on. They're looking at the fundraisers and different activities for the school. I don't have any specific dates right now, but there are coupon cards available for $5 if anyone would like one. I know the parents will be selling them.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Speaking of BCMS PTO, 16th, we had a meeting on January 29th. BCMS, we have an evening of exploration showcase of what BCMS has to offer to respected sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. Also, on Veterans Sales Assembly, it was held. 35 family members participated in the ceremony and breakfast. And finally, it was a magazine drive that had a very good return, and then also the PTO was looking into some possible fundraisers for the spring, which went through months into something in a little restaurant.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Keppe?
I attended recently a PTO president's meeting, and two of the major topics discussed had to do with promotion of the Vernon Public School System, and basically in competition with the magnet schools and how best to project a positive imaging school system and the assets that we have to offer and ways to go about that. And the other major presentation was done by Alan Swobody, who came and talked about the Vernon Community Network, and now there are no less than 40 organizations in that group and plans for a community network fair. And you do have volunteers for the various organizations within that group. Dr. Conway was also present, and he also had some comments about that meeting.
Do you have any comments?
We actually started to talk about Vision 2025, which the board will have a presentation on at your next meeting. And just the infancy of where we need to go in the next 10 years and galvanizing that support, getting a plan that's accepted by all different stakeholders in the town. And so it's a very exciting, exciting process. Additionally, we talked about pulling everyone together from the community conversation, the people who were there last time and others who are interested. To give everyone an update, three things that really came out of that were the mentoring, which Mr. Keppe just spoke about, that the service bureau is having a fair. The, what's the second one? Losing my mind.
Marketing.
Pardon?
Marketing.
Marketing, thank you, Ms. Bajer. Ms. Bajer was there as well. It was marketing, which is what Mr. Keppe mentioned as well. And then the third was another, and that was really talking about academic standards and excellence, and that's where the vision will come into, so that will be a kickoff for that. So exciting.
Anyone else have any thoughts? Mr. Beul?
I don't have a report, but I just think, you know, this is budget season. I think this board should say a big thank you to all the PTOs for everything they do for the students of Vernon, especially in tight times like budget freezes and whatnot. They do a lot for the kids of Vernon. I think the board should acknowledge that. I don't have a report, but I just think, you know, this is budget season, and I think this Board should say a big thank you to all the PTOs for everything they do for the students of Vernon, especially in tight times like budget freezes and whatnot. They do a lot for the kids of Vernon. I think the Board should acknowledge that.
All right, I just have two reports. Center Row School, I was unable to go to their December meeting, but Mr. Harrison went to that, and I understand that one looked very well, and people were really glad to hear all that he had to say, and I believe they're looking forward to the evening of exploration on Wednesday. They also are starting, Mr. DeValles is working with the student council as part of their PDIS program. They've gotten the book, Have You Filled Your Bucket Today? And the fifth grade students are reading them, the older students are reading them to the other students, I believe, and promoting acts of kindness. And I guess every time you do an act of kindness, you fill your bucket, but if you do something that's not nice, you are a bucket dipper. And I'd be interested to see how it goes. But it sounds, it sounds great. I know other schools are doing it, and they say it's very successful, so.
Action is mission, right? And there are students, do you have kindness or filling the black coffee at the hall? So you can see how we should have filled it up.
Great, thank you. That's great. And also the fifth graders sang at the Wolfpack game, I believe that was in January, and they were so excited, they were on the Jumbotron and everything else, and I believe they were invited back for next year, so they obviously did a great job, so that's great. Obviously a good, show good example for our school system. And the last thing I have to report on is the School Wellness Council. We only meet every other month now because each individual school, with the help of the Alliance for a wealthier generation, has their own committee now, and then they report back to us what's going on in their schools. So some of this news is old, but I'm just going to get it out there. Skinner Road School had their turkey trot in November, and they had over 30 people show up for that. BCMS had their family fun night, which they said was very well-attended, where they had volleyball and basketball and all sorts of, and they played league games and so on. And the Arctic Splash, which we know we've talked about, that Dr. Conway even went in, they made $2,500, which will support 33 students to go to summer camp for the summer week, which is great. And our next meeting is not until, well, it's actually, in fact, great, but I can't remember that one, so the next one I can go to is April. That's all I have. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to item 6.0, to review and update Board of Education calendar. Anybody have any questions or issues, corrections to the calendar? And 7.0, opportunity for questions from the guests, any other items? Anyone have any questions? Mr. Kennedy? No questions? Anybody else? Okay. Item 8.0, our budget workshop, 8.1, 2014-15 budget workshop. Everybody have their budget stuff out? Have everybody got those in their long folders tonight?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Fisher. We, you have a series of questions. I'll read the questions, the answers, some of them are in chart form, so I'll read all their numbers for you certainly. The first question was update on magnet schools. What is the population, when students are leaving us, how much will we spend before the end of the year? So Mr. Bird has updated the magnet school tuition chart for you, so you can see the number of students enrolled on November 1st, the number of students we have been charged for, that the difference there would be pre-K students who are in those schools and they're not charged pre-K, the state is paying that this year. In addition, we have just heard from Connecticut International Baptist Lariat Academy, they have not sent us an invoice, and we have just heard from them that they are not charging this year. We're still investigating that, but, because it does come to $34,000. And so if they do not charge this year, then we will be actually under budget, is what we budgeted for, which is very nice. If they do, then we're just about $10,000 over budget. So that's a very good thing. They have not sent us an invoice, and that was the message we received from them, so I'm looking for something a little more solid than just a message. You can see the students there. The second was how many students have been accepted into the agricultural education program at Rockville High School? Last year, we had 29 who applied and 25 who were accepted, and two of those 25 chose different schools. In addition, this fall, so that was last year, this fall, an additional 12 applied and six were accepted. So from, these are students from outside of the district. For 13, 14, they have recruited, 27 have applied, 23 have been accepted. There are still four who are completing paperwork, and five are waiting for their applications. They have asked for them. So that would be a total of 36, excuse me, altogether, who have been applying. The next was a question of what is the cost per pupil versus other towns, especially in our DIRG? That is Exhibit A, it's a legal size document, so it looks a little bit like this. You can locate that. The, you can see that the net current expenditure per pupil for DIRG, which is our DIRG, there are 15, is that correct? 15 districts. We are sixth from the lowest in terms of what we pay per pupil. Our per pupil cost for 1213 was $13,449, again, 70 cents. You can see, in contrast, the lowest was Bristol, and they paid $12,479, so just under $1,000 less. And the highest is Bloomfield, which is $18,444, which is over 5,000, or just $5,000 higher than where we are. I had also asked in this if we could rank these or sort these by net current expenditure per pupil, and so the rest of the document are all of the towns listed, and they are from the lowest cost per pupil to the highest cost per pupil. You can see the lowest in the state is our neighbor, our next-door neighbor, Ellington, at $11,233. And the highest is Cornwall at $25,758. So there's quite a range. We did highlight throughout that list the schools in DIRG. So I would say we're in the bottom third, or the lowest third of our DIRG, and I would also say we are in the lowest third of the state. Maybe even lower than that, might be lower, top bottom four. The next question was about our health savings account for last year and this year. There is a chart here, there was a change between fiscal year 13 to fiscal year 14, so last year to this year. 65 people left the POS, which is the regular plan that you would all be familiar with, and 72 people were added into the HSA. So there was a change from last year to this year of 72 people in favor of the HSA and 65 people fewer in the point of service. What does the Board of Education spend on the Board of Education? That is on page four, and you can see very clearly, this is what is in the current budget. So there is a half a secretary's salary, and that person does many, many more things. I would say it's not 1.5 at this point, but that person supports the Board in preparing board packets, not the information, but in the copying and all of that, the budgets, the budget binders, et cetera. There are clerical salaries, so any time a board meeting is filmed or is recorded, and there is a recorder here that is paid for that. Legal services, that is the Board, the attorney, Fred Dorsey, is not the administrator's attorney or central office attorney, that attorney belongs to the Board and works for the Board, and that's why that line item is here. We have administrator's contract coming up next year and two other contracts coming up next year, so we've decreased that a little bit. Other professional services, we've got the CAPE policy update, other training that the Board has, and crack minority recruitment. Conference fees would include any credit fees, CAPE, and that's our membership as well, CAPE convention, CAPE new board member packets as well. American School Board Journal, that all of you should be receiving. If you're not, please let me know, and we will make sure that does happen. And then other supplies and materials, so awards, the nameplates that are in front of the board, et cetera. The next couple of questions, sorry, Mr. Stevens, let's see.
Thank you. I realize that's a very small amount of money, but I was just wondering, what is crack minority recruitment?
We are required by law to have a minority recruitment policy, which we do, and we are required to encourage minorities to apply to Vernon.
This is a hiring policy?
Yes, yes. And so we certainly, I'm sorry, that isn't clear, is it? Thank you. And yes, and crack provides that service, and so we join with that. Thank you, I apologize.
Good question. Any other questions on that?
There are a series of maintenance questions, which I will admit that I did not answer, and so I would ask Mr. Kleynant or Mr. Blusa, who did answer those, if they would just come forward very quickly and answer those questions.
Do you have those questions in fact?
Yes. There were specific questions online, and I was surprised what happened to these. It must be due to $5,000. Two years ago, this was $13,000, something that varies, and part of the reason why all these numbers, there were several questions about the low count of houses. Part of the reason they have low count houses, we've been on freeze for a year and a half. Mr. Carroll, he called my suppliers and told them not to sell them, like, is that bad? So when you look at, if you want to cut it in next year's budget, we haven't gotten things done, we're budgeting for prior years because of the freezes, and we've just been taking them canned out of the road, so I would.
Spend some of the bird meat and tournai.
Yeah, I would strongly advise not to cut it, but if you feel necessary to cut it, I would forewarn you that we may be back if we, because we do have things that have been deferred. That's pretty much the same thing. Machinery, we have an additional cost this year, batteries and maintenance on all the automated equipment that we've added, and air conditioning. This unit has never, this level inside was never really tested, so all the air conditioning, a lot of the air conditioning was moved from the project, and, you know, there's been other things to be done that's not being done because of freezes. The fire alarm issue, we added that because our line is pretty much at maximum, and it's always been doing the fire alarm attachment. You know, we're either going to, we may have to subcontract something out if we don't add to that capability at house, and hence we've got metal license, electrician, so we'll have one on that.
Thank you. Any questions on those? Okay, very much appreciated.
The next question, number 10, have we fully implemented the wireless system at Rockville High School, or are we still working out the bugs? If it's fully functional, why did we not include the wireless network at BCMS in the budget? The wireless system at RHS is fully functional. There's always adjustments to be made, but it is completely functional at the high school. The wireless network at BCMS was brought to the Board's Technology Committee. It was, I would say, $95,000, and so that was my choice not to put it in the budget to bring forward to you, but I did share that with you as one of those items that was requested. Certainly, the Technology Committee was very supportive of that. We know if we put wireless in the middle school, then we can use the wireless nodes that are there in the elementary schools to strengthen what they have. What we will be doing for testing this year is moving the wireless nodes, the small ones, and moving them from school to school to strengthen the wireless access in certain areas. So the Technology Committee, I can certainly speak to that if they wish, but that is where we are right now. In terms of the inventory of computers and their ages, we did, we do have a complete inventory, that was part of our budget last year. And so we do, you can see the numbers, we have 373 desktops and 286 laptops, all zero to five years old. We have 737 desktops that are six to 10 years old, and other 70 laptops. And then 782, that's, that's got to be wrong. Yes, now it is right. 782 desktops that are more than 10 years old. You can see why I said that has to be wrong. But it's right. Is that correct, Mr. Bird? Want to speak to that?
Mr. Chair, as you see from the notes, there's some of the equipment on there, for instance, an Apple IIe 1985, it was a barley and a lory, I believe those were just sitting on shelves somewhere at the end and probably disposed of. So these, you know, that 10-year-plus number of 782, more likely probably about half that amount is in active use.
Thank you. Okay. I'm sorry, did I have any questions about that?
The last question, investigate the possibility for a day school week. I will have a fuller, a fuller, exactly, a more full answer for you on Wednesday. I have done a lot of research, I probably have an inch stack of documents here. I did discover that there is one district in Massachusetts that is exploring this. The Board did give a go-ahead to do that. The biggest stumbling block for that district, which is Mulholland Trail Regional School District in Western Massachusetts, the biggest is the same that we would have, and that is that we are required to attend school for 180 days. And so in order to attend for fewer days, because we were adding hours, there would have to be legislative action. So that is probably the biggest stumbling block. So I'm going to give a report on Wednesday. If you want it to be much more thorough, then I would expect that the Board is going to commit to start lobbying to get rid of the 180 days. And so I will give you, in general, what they think the cost savings might be, and there's, you only save in transportation and utilities, and that's if you close the schools down completely, so, but I do have, I do have more details, so. Otherwise, if we have 180 days, we're going completely year-round school, four days as well. But I will be providing more information on Wednesday.
Okay, any other questions? Mrs. Bush?
Going back to the computers, the 10-year-plus machines, you said there's probably about half of the machines that are 10 years plus that are actually being used right now. What I'd like to know is in what capacity, are they teacher computers, are they slated computers, like just to run network processing or something like that? What, what capacity would they be used in? And even a little more dated, I'd like to know how many laptops and desktops are within one to two years old? one to two years old?
Last week, I asked Dr. Conway to, with your administration, to come up with a list of possible items that we could cut, because I believe, this is my opinion, I don't know for us yet, I think that a 4.79% increase is too high. And I don't see it going anywhere with the town, so I think we need to consider some cuts. I was hoping that she had prepared a list and we can go through it and see if any of those tend to us as possible cuts.
Surely, surely. And I tag-team this with Mr. Picaro certainly, and what else in this, things on this list. Across the district, we're looking at actuals, believe that we can reduce Medicare by 10,000, Social Security by 10,000, based on our staffing. The next two items, workers' compensation, as we said, we are, we're self-insured. And so the number we got while the finance director was out for a while was a 100% increase, $130,000. That's much higher than we've ever received before. Right now, we are hoping that we'll be able to reduce that by about $75,000. We are waiting, the town council meeting was canceled last week. They are meeting tomorrow. They probably have a marathon meeting going on, but they're meeting tomorrow evening. We're hoping on Wednesday to hear more information about what their budget and for workers' compensation and how we'll be able to reduce. So that is not one that I would ask you to make right now. I'm hoping that by Wednesday night, we will have a number. Exactly the same for data processing, that's the VDPC, the Burnham Data Processing Center. The increase to that account was $184,000, I know. I'm hoping that we'll be able to reduce that by 150, so that it's still an increase, but only an increase of about $34,000. The, the next three are, we've gone out to bid with medical insurance with the town, so we'll get three different bids. One is just the town, one is just the school board, and the other is the combined. The reductions there, which I, again, I would think, although, we won't know when, do we have any idea when the bids are coming in, Mr. Picaro?
Through the chair, in two weeks, we should have the bid results back.
So it will be after you set your budget, but that doesn't mean that the budget can't change after that. We would inform the mayor. Right now, we are budgeting at a 15% increase. This would reduce it to a 13% increase. I would not feel comfortable, nor would Mr. Picaro, going any lower than 13%. All insurance is going up. The next item is the maintainer, the painter is on that list. And that is a vacant position right now, but it's certainly one that is needed. And then if the painter position goes, the paint supplies as well. Substitute teachers, reducing the increase by $10,000. That's, that's a small risk, but I'm hoping to put permanent substitutes, which will reduce that in each school next year. Custodial maintenance overtime, again, by $10,000. Secretarial overtime by $6,000. Magnet school tuition by 10,000, just based on our actuals right now. That does not mean that CBA, Connecticut International Baptist Church Academy, will not charge tuition next year. But because of the real positive things that you have seen on Facebook and you have heard from parents even here this evening, I think that we are, hopefully have reached the top number of our students leaving town. And that we will be bringing more. We have another student who just came back on Friday this past week from a magnet school. So I'm hoping that that will, that we've reached the highest that we're going to go. Telecommunications and the copier lease, we're out on bidding for both of those. The telecommunications is voice-over H and M protocol, so that is an ongoing bid. It will start until July 1. We don't have the definitive numbers, but we do believe what they're telling us is that we can save that much money. Copier rent is still out, that bid, that should be back shortly. The, we have eliminated a couple of 1.5 administrative positions, if you recall, the two seat positions and the halftime assessment position. And so this is a 0.3 curriculum position that supports those positions, so that would not be needed. At Rockville High School, unfortunately, there was a math teacher vacancy. And so since it was not a permanent person in there, we did not pull it over when we created the budget. So I would ask that you add that back in. Mr. Rocket was quite concerned about that. In pupil personnel, there is a position that was budgeted twice that we have found, so that would certainly be something you could take. The other areas are for discussion. If we are going to reduce, seven teachers would be a reduction of just about $400,000. You mentioned last week that you had looked, or we had presented you with class sizes at the middle school and at the high school. They're very favorable. And so the suggestion would be that these teachers would come from those two areas. Last year, one of the things the board did prior to having the budget increase was a reduction of secretarial help and her professional clerk, and library assistant. So those are all discussion items that we would ask that you make a decision on. And then there's the risk accounts. Projected vacancy rate, we did that last year, so that would be when there is someone not in the position, we save, we save funding until we hire in the position. But that is a risk. That might not happen for teachers. There isn't a time when there's no one in the position, there's paying someone to do the job. Futures education, right now, we would put 50,000. Again, that's a risk. We're not sure where that savings will come from, whether it would come from a reorganization of the administration, whether it would come from transportation, from out of district. But that is, so that is again, a risk number. So this, this does come up to $1 million, which is what I was thinking, to come down below 3%. It's 2.81%. I think that would be, that's where I was hoping to come in at the beginning, but just was unable to do so. So there, there's some things here that are definite. There are some things that you could certainly do this evening, some things I would prefer that you wait until Wednesday evening, and some things that you can choose to take a risk on and for discussion. Anybody want to start, questions? Mr. Kemp?
I'm not going to make a motion yet on any of this, but I wanted to ask a couple of questions. One has to do with the magnet school cost to us when a student returns. When they do so mid-year, what is the, how does the math work out? Is this pro-rated to the month, or do we have to pay the entire year tuition? How does this work out?
My understanding is by the month. Yes. By the month.
Okay, so that's a universal agreement with all of these locations. We don't have to go back and forth at each one more than that. All right, thank you.
Question. A question about the, the FTEs, the teacher, reduction. Would that be done through attrition, through the retirements? Or would we have to lose actual bodies?
Right now, we have 17 retirements. And so certainly, we try to do that. We look at everyone's certification. So if you're certified in several areas, you might not be teaching, your assignment might not be in your favorite place, but you can still have a job. So that would be our goal, is to make sure that there were no people walking out the door. Exactly. Anyone else? Want to make a motion? Oh, sorry, Mr. Stevens?
I do have a question, but it's not specific to this particular issue. Central office, or central administration, item 51111, there is a $140,000 increase. And then 51115, we're saying to be $188,000 decrease. There's no budgeted numbers from the previous year in there, so I'm just trying to understand where the increases are.
The increase is the movement of Mrs. Beul's position. She's now Director of Human Resources, or Director of Personnel, which includes human resources. And so she can no longer be in a union. And so she was moved out of one area into another. I know that it would be, we would like to see a decrease consistent with that. However, that would be in this year, that this year's budget. So, but Mrs. Sherman was added into that Vernon Elementary School. So her principal salary was added in. Right, there we are. Right, that, that reflects the reduction of 1.5 administrators, plus Mrs. Beul was moved out to the other place. Anyone else have any questions or motions? Mr. Kemp?
I will reduce the Medicare account by 10,000 and the Social Security account by 10,000.
Mr. Stevens?
Second.
Any discussion or comments? All those in favor? Mr. Kemp?
These figures, I want to make sure I understand what you said earlier, the 75,000, for instance, is that the 13% figure?
Are you talking about the workers' compensation?
The three, the three, no.
I'm sorry.
The PPO or subscription, you said each of those three, I think, were 13%.
That, that's correct. So it's a 2% drop from 15 to 13% in each of those three lines.
All right, and I move that we reduce the budget by 75,000, 20,000, and 2,000 for each of those, for those three accounts. Appreciate a second.
Mr. Stevens? Second. Discussion?
Mr. Stevens?
We just asked Mr. Picaro about the comfort level of the risk of reducing those to the 13%.
Through the chair. I wouldn't go any further than 13%. I think that's bringing this down as far as, I would be comfortable recommending to the board, but not any farther than that. And that's based on, we started at 23% for a no-bid renewal with Connecticut, our insurance broker, and that, and look at our experience. Unfortunately, our experience, experience, experience has been high, especially in this last quarter. That's been our highest experience, and that doesn't bode well for us at the negotiating table. But we are fortunate to outbid with the town. Hopefully, get some over from that process. So at the end of the day, the thing that we could potentially go down to 13% to be providing a revised bid to 15%. And they heard we were going out to bid, so they moved a little bit. And so if the bid results, the bid results are not favorable at 13%, I would be comfortable with that. If, if they don't, we may need to switch carriers to get to that 13%. So, somebody would know that it may not be our current carrier.
Thank you. So based on that, I will support this motion.
Any other questions or comments on this motion? Hold on, that's a fair one. It's unanimous. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Kemp?
Starting with the substitute teacher account, where the administration felt the figures were a reasonable amount, therefore, I move, basically, the rest of the list down to the secretary. So the motion is to reduce the substitute teacher 10,000, custodial maintenance 10, the secretarial overtime 6, magnet school tuition by 10, telecommunications 12,500, the copier rental lease 10,000, and the curriculum department 8,562. Mr. Stevens?
Should we have any questions on that? Sorry. Through you, to Mr. Picaro, please. Was the custodial overtime account, and I did it real quickly, it looked like 68,000 out in that neighborhood. $10,000 seems like a very minimal impact on that. I'm wondering if we can do a little more on that account.
Through the chair. I would caution not to move farther than the 10,000 on this account. We have, especially with weather, personal events in the school, where we have to have mandatory overtime. I think where we could possibly offset some of those costs is in the area of the school use account. So if you continue to have our schools be used for various events on a quarterly and increasing basis, we could potentially offset some of those costs on that side of the balance sheet. But on this side, I would caution not to go farther than that. Welcome.
Mr. Stevens?
Through the chair, is the secretary curriculum department position a elimination or?
Yes, it's a 0.3 position, 10 hours. I have a question about the telecommunications and copier rental lease pending bid results. How confident are you on those?
Through the chair, very confident on those numbers. I think the, as Dr. Conway had said, we're just wrapping up the cloud here, grant the lease. We are moving toward very briefly, and we talked about it in prior finance and committee meetings and board meetings, going towards document stations, following printing. So we're going to be implementing some innovative technology that should hopefully decrease our, our total cost for toilet, for example, paper and supplies. So I'm confident on the copier rental lease, as Dr. Conway said, and telecommunications. We were hopeful that that process would be moving a little bit faster, so we can realize even additional savings, which I believe we will, but I think initially for the fiscal year of '15 coming up, until that bid goes out, and until we get the results back, and this is something we're doing jointly with the town. I think it's safe to say 12,500 would be a good place to be. The reason why we're going to do that even before the bid results come back is because we already are aware from prior discussions of some audit work that we've done internally to cancel some lines. That'll save us, give us some immediate cost savings in the fiscal year.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Hey, there's a motion on the floor to reduce from the substitute teachers down to the secretary curriculum department. All those in favor? Anyone else? These are.
I'd like to make a comment. I think it's necessary to support the reduction of staff, especially given the class size numbers that we're getting between VCMs and the high school. I'm wondering if we reduce teachers, eliminate positions, can we direct the superintendent to eliminate them in those two, to consider eliminating in those two areas before a place else, number one. And number two, I would not feel comfortable supporting the reduction of teachers unless we're going to do something with administrators as well. And I would ask that the superintendent would look into the reduction of administrators. And my first suggestion when we got this, I said that it would be Mr. White's position, and we discussed it. So, kind of twofold. I think we do need to reduce teachers, but I would not feel comfortable doing that without doing the administration as well.
Yes, Mr. Stevens? We did reduce 1.5 administrators in my current budget, so we have certainly done that. Mr. Stansfield?
I just had an additional question. Center Road School, line 5113, there's a 14% increase. I do see that there's a couple new positions or FTE increases. Struggling to find why you're dumping 200, maybe 3,000 dollars on the increase.
Two of the positions are the kindergarten teachers that we've removed from the Alliance District Grant and put in there. Additionally, we moved a teacher from Skinner Road the day before school opened to Center Road. So that didn't appear in this year's budget, so would appear as a big jump in next year's budget. And I think Skinner Road's actually is a negative in that particular line item. Thank you.
Where's the library assistant?
At the high school.
Didn't we, didn't we struggle with library last year?
Yes. That wasn't, you eliminated that and then when the million dollars came back to the board, that was one position we regret.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Kemp?
I'd like to talk about the math teacher at the high school now. It seems that the position is there. It wasn't accounted for in the budget correctly, is that understanding? Okay, now move approval of 54,000 for 37 for the inclusion in the budget of the math teacher at RHS.
Second. Any discussion or comments?
Quickly consider that in conjunction with other reductions in staff rather than, seems to me they go together if we're looking to reduce staff in the high school. Should that be part of our consideration?
It certainly could. You could just say reduce six teachers and put the funding there. I think it's cleaner this way because we don't know where the seven teachers will come from. It might not be a mathematics teacher. So we're going to need to reduce seven anyway and fund it from one place to the mathematics teacher. So it can be, that's the net, but it's certainly, I think it's cleaner this way. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Unanimous. Mr. Kemp?
I approve the 1,700 dollar reduction of the paraprofessional account.
Can I ask exactly what that is? Not affiliated paraprofessional. Shouldn't be paraprofessional acting similar to that. Is this the next step for, is that correct?
I believe this has been in a Maple Street line item and it was money diverted to the, I forget the title, Star Swayman. So when we created that position for her, she had her own line item, but this, the first year, a couple years ago, was some of the money we used for that, but we no longer need a separate line item for that. So it's just a, a community school director.
Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor? Unanimous. Mrs. Aron.
Could I just ask through you where we're at, Mr. Carl?
My computer's broken, so we're having to do this. We are at a reduction, through the chair, of 140,290. All of the reductions plus the addition of the math teacher at this point in time. Total reduction of 140,290.
All right, Mr. Kemp?
I approve a reduction of 393,059, 67,360, 24,000, and 12,000 respectively for the four accounts listed.
Is there a second? I would move to divide the question.
Well, it's not seconded yet, so it's not a motion to divide. I don't mind if we do.
I'll second the third discussion.
Second.
I'll second your motion for the third discussion.
Which one?
Yours.
Okay. So there's a motion for all four of them.
Now, without discussion. Now I will move to divide the question, please.
I'll second.
All right, I'll vote in favor of dividing the motion. Unanimous. Okay, let's speak to each other then. Mr. Stansfield?
I'm just not sure I'm ready tonight to arbitrarily cut this much staff. If that'll allow understanding of the impact, I know we said we're going to look at the retired teachers. Certainly not arguing we have to make some sacrifices. I'd just like a little more of a contrary plan if we could.
Mrs. Aron?
I'm wondering if paraprofessionals are, that are suggested, are clerical only, they're not clerical.
And where were the clerical, where are those positions? Lake Street and Skinner. Now, mind you, the other principals would like, same job.
Regarding the teacher, the teacher reduction, Dr. Conway, if we were to ask you to provide more details to where or what a plan would look like for that reduction, is that something you'd be able to show us, let's say by Wednesday?
We're attempting that, yes. I believe we will.
So if we didn't take action on this, we'd have more details than requested?
That's correct. Thank you.
I personally would prefer to still wait on that until Wednesday if we can't pen that additional information. So I would make a motion that we table that particular item, the teacher, seven FTEs until Wednesday.
And all those in favor of tabling the teacher discussion until Wednesday? Unanimous. And I have a question.
Dr. Carl, you said that those paraprofessional clerical positions are at Lake Street and Skinner Road that you're using. Do, are there clerical paraprofessionals that you have in your school?
No, there are none. I would imagine that in high school. High school has them in attendance. Their parents are their secretaries. I apologize. I think they're secretaries.
There's one para-educator that works part-time for high school, and there's one that supports the middle school office as well.
Okay, thank you. I stand corrected. That is correct. In the middle school office, there is one paraprofessional that is clerical. And in the high school, there's a person at the front desk, the receptionist, is also a paraprofessional. Thank you very much. I do stand corrected.
And where are the secretary positions that you're suggesting?
We have not named those. Last year, we eliminated several at the high school, and so that's where we would do that. We can come back with you to that on Wednesday if you would like. So we're waiting on the teachers and the secretaries until Wednesday. Does anyone want to take any action on a paraprofessional clerical or a library assistant to make?
I have a question. Do you have an idea of how many paraprofessionals will be retired?
Is that within? I do not.
They don't have to give you any kind of?
I'd like to move to reduce the budget by 24,000 in the paraprofessional clerical account at Lake Street and Skinner Road School.
It's, the motion is in place. It was divided, so you, the chair simply brings up the issue, one at a time, one of them is tabled in any particular order. If the desire of the group is to act on the paraprofessional, I think I just heard, then that's a whole one.
Okay, so we'll take a vote on the paraprofessional clerical, reduce the budget by 23,000. Any questions?
Well, then please, the library assistant to be voted on.
Any questions on the library assistant? Mrs. Aron?
I'd just like to say that I couldn't support that reduction, the library. We wondered last year how critical it is to students and staff and how they operate, short-staffed all the time anyway. I couldn't support that 12,000 dollar reduction.
Can I ask how many libraries there are? There's one certified library person and the other two are non-certified, so library assistant. So two library assistants? Yes. All right. Well, I'm going to call for a vote on that anyway. All those in favor of reducing the budget by 12,000 on library assistant? And all those opposed? That does not care. Do we need a motion to table the secretary?
I was just going to say to be official, I'd like to make a motion that we table the action on the secretaries until Wednesday.
Second, Mr. Stansfield? All those in favor? Unanimous. Are there any other items on this list that we'd like to take action on? Mr. Poole?
I just want to speak to the maintainer painter in the painting supply at the, in the district. Couple years ago, we spent a lot of money bringing these buildings up to the current level. We've been short of painter for many years. We got the painter for a couple of years and then he moved on to another position. I think if you look at the buildings, you will see there is still a need to have a painter in district. And I think the other issue that we run into if we don't have a painter in the district, if we want to do any contract painting, we run into issues with our union. We can't do contracted painting if we don't have a painter on our staff. So I would not support reducing by a painter and I would look to see if there's another alternative to that. Thank you.
Also speaking of painter, is it a possibility to split the cost to two painters?
The position is articulated clearly in the contract and the salary for that is there, so it involves negotiations. So is it possible? Absolutely. But I can't say that it's possible today. It would involve contract negotiations in order to create two positions that were, if you wanted to split it, at half the cost.
I'd like to look into, is that looking to, impossible?
Mr. Kemp?
I'd like to bring up the projected vacancy rate and the futures education LLC by moving the reduction of 12,000 on 79 and 50,000 under the futures items.
Second. Discussion, comments? Mr. Stansfield?
Can someone explain what the projected vacancy rate is, please?
When a person leaves the district, generally you then advertise and go out and interview and all of that. So there is a vacancy between the time the person leaves and the next person comes in. If it's a teacher, obviously we can't leave kids without a teacher, so you've got a sudden there, so it's not as much. So this does happen. We try not to have vacancies. This year, we've actually saved because we're in a hiring freeze, and so we have had those vacancies. But right now, we do, we have an opening, for example, in the central office, and so we are between, and that would be the vacancy rate.
Thank you. I had a second question. My, the development of futures education obviously predates me returning to the board, so I'm not entirely sure what the deliverable there is. But it seems to me that 50,000 is kind of a nebulous number, and I guess I question how strong you feel about that particular number.
Actually, we contracted with futures or asked them to come in just around the first of the year they came in. So this is new, and they are looking at our practices in special education. So they're looking at classroom practices, they're looking at how we're organized administratively, they are looking at our out-of-district placement, they're looking at IUPs, how they have that level of confidentiality. So to see our, how organized are we, are we following the IUPs, are there other options? They're also looking at transportation, which is generally where they find savings to see how we can do that. That and what's the other area that they find savings in? Out-of-district, I think I've covered it all.
You have?
Through the chair, Medicaid.
Medicaid reimbursement, thank you so much. So yes, it's a very nebulous number. That's why it says risk accounts there.
If the board approves that dollar amount, it will come out of the special education budget?
It will have to, or it would come out. And we can't reduce it. We would have to take it out of the bottom line somewhere. And if the special ed account is short, then obviously that has to come from somewhere else.
Is that the group that has been looking into our Medicare reimbursement?
No, that's, thank you. That's not, no, that, they just take care of Medicare reimbursement fees. This is a group that's providing us with an analysis of all of our special education services. We've been questioned over the last couple of years. That's an area that's over 20% of our budget. And so I think it behooves us to do our due diligence to truly look at what we're spending, how we're spending it, how can we service our students better and do it in a more cost-effective way.
I have a question. Is this the company that, when we hired them, they guaranteed they won't charge us a fee unless they're able to save us 40,000?
No, they, they want to save us their fee, and their fee is 25.
Oh.
And we're paying that over two years, half this year and half next year.
Reducing, how does, how would, what would the impact be in reducing that 50,000 is what I get at?
To our, to our budget?
No, to our services or to improve the budget. We're reducing that, and is that going to cost us any of their services or anything?
Of futures education services? No, those are the savings we're expecting. Some of it in transportation, some of it in Medicaid. So wouldn't we want any one line item, as Mrs. Aron said a few moments ago, would it come out of special education? Well, right now, that is where it would come out, probably some on Medicaid, some on transportation, both for special ed. But in the end, of course, if we incur costs in those areas, we have to pay those costs. And so the funding would have to come from another line item. We would have to transfer money over. Any other questions or comments? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to reduce the budget by 12,179 for projected vacancy rate and 50,000 for futures education. All those in favor? Any other actions or projects tonight? Through you, I'd just like to ask, Mr. Carl.
Through the chair, we have approved a reduction, total reduction of 226,388, bringing our new budget to 52,687,371. That's a difference of 2,192,584 over the current fiscal year, or a 4.34% increase.
Mr. Kemp?
To better understand that the position of the town, I'm saying, I'd like to ask about the net current expenditure for people, because that is obtained, and it's very helpful to have this. Were we able to obtain this particular breakdown?
What is your question? Oh, the state.
It was not in the town's annual report.
No, if it were twelve thirteen, that would come out early enough. I don't think the towns report. They should be eleven, eleven-twelve should be in the town's report, but not twelve thirteen. Unfortunately, it would be a year behind.
It would be helpful if we could get data from the town that reflects our debt per capita. That would be interesting to see where we rank amongst the towns in the state in the two critical categories. One is debt per capita, and the other is the, they call it the angelic, I think, the adjusted net grant list per capita. Those rankings, in addition to the rankings of the current expenditures for people, are a pretty good indicator of where we are relative to our peers and where we are as a standard of organization.
Any questions or motions? Second. Mrs. Bush? Second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Are there any other items on this list that we'd like to take action on? Mr. Paul?
I just want to speak to the maintainer painter in the painting supply at the, or